Okay, we'll call it meeting in order. The October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, Wabestown Select Board Meeting. The first item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is to set the agenda. Does anybody have any additions to the agenda or changes? Any motion to accept it is written?
Make motion to accept the agenda is written.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. View of open public comments. Back of the room on the shelf, there's a laminated paper tells how those boards are run, meetings are running and stuff, if anybody's interested. Also, there's a sign-in sheet. I noticed several people walked in without signing it. It should be signed, we have a record of who's at every meeting. So, if you could at least sign it on your way out or something, we'd have that. Any Select Board announcements? I have one. We've put in over a half mile of drainage in the two road areas in town on Pleasant Street, Hebert Road. And just reaffirm what my thoughts were about these gravel roads in town. Everybody wants the roads to be graded. In a lot of cases, we found there ain't nothing like, I mean, that much gravel some places. You can see where the mud holes were earlier, they'll be two to three feet of it. A lot of the grout and nothing else that had to be put in there over the years. But for the most part, where there was gravel, there wasn't even close to a foot or a teenage, just like there should be. I mean, I've been talking to the town manager and the road foreman. We're going to be working on a plan to bring before the Select Board at the budget meeting on. We're going to set for hopefully for November third.
Third, if you set it tonight, it'll be November third.
Might not have finalized, but we're going to crunch numbers. Jackie's getting some numbers from the material suppliers and stuff. Maybe put it for the voters. We either got to up the road rehab fund substantially for a number of years. Or maybe see about bonding, so we can make a full tip ever, because you never, at the rate we're going now, we're never going to catch up, we're always going to be going behind. It just takes too much material, too much time and money. So, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to be working on that. So, stay tuned and we'll see what comes out of it. And then whatever we come up with, we'll put it before the voters at town meeting and see if they're up for it. Try to work it, in my mind anyway, similar to what we do with equipment. Reserve funds and fire truck funds and stuff like that. Stuff we put enough every year. If we went out, say, borrow, probably going to take somewhere as a neighborhood of seven hundred to a million dollars, thousands of dollars, a million dollars to accomplish what we need to do. You know, we take out, borrow that money, then pay it out of the rehab fund each year, something like that, so it ain't one separate big hit. So, that's about the only way I can think that we ever catch up, because just, I mean, you want the town road crew to grade the roads, but you got to have something to work with it. I just, a lot of cases, it's right down the ledge and sticks. And there was only, on Hebert Road, there was just what gravel they put on a few years ago, that's all that's on there. It was underneath that we're pulling up roots and ledges, or that was right near the surface. It was just all good. So, anyway, stay tuned, that's all I got to say on that for now, too. We get some hard numbers to go through. Okay, everyone else on set? Next item is public announcements. Are there any public announcements? Commission, committees, trustees, emergency service reports, other board announcements?
Yes, sir. Oh, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead first.
I'm going to give you a few minutes. Planning Commission, I've got two quick announcements and then a request for municipal planning grant. First, I wanted to thank everyone for filling out town plan surveys that have been going around. They're still active. I'll send out another reminder from Port Shore on that. We have drop-off boxes at town offices, the library, both the elementary and high school, as well as a camouflage envelope at Uncle pantry. So, we try to check those, yes.
Several people have said that they've asked me where the one that held the pantry, there's none.
I will go check.
I mean, because, yeah, I've had two people call and say there's not one that held the pantry.
There was enough to about a week ago or a week and a half of those. So, that might may have been before that.
Okay. Yeah, it was, yeah.
Okay. So, anyway, there is, there is one there. So, appreciate everybody's support on that. That's going to help shape our town for the next eight years, putting that together. So, the survey's important and just wanted to continue on. Also, I wanted to let folks know that we have a meeting, a big change for our Planning Commission for November, had a scheduling conflict. We typically meet on the second Wednesday of every month at six P.M. at the town offices. In November, we can't do that, so we're going to move it to Tuesday, November eighteenth. It'll be the Planning Commission meeting at six P.M. at the town offices. Wednesday of December, we'll go back to the normal schedule on that, of the second Wednesday. It's just, we had had a conflict on November, so it was important to get together, so we need to make a change for that. The next thing is a request of support for another municipal planning grant. And I believe in your packet, you have a municipal resolution for municipal planning grant. Our local hazard mitigation plan is set to expire in November. While Vermont Emergency Management hasn't been in contact at all, I've asked the question at Regional Planning Commission a number of times. And finally, cornered them again, and I believe it's November eighteenth, that, that, that plan will expire. Unfortunately, the federal funds have been cut from that program that used to support it. They feel that there's, it may not even be likely to have a federal declaration right now under the current administration, federal administration, with a lot of cutbacks, but still feel that it's important to have things in place for the local hazard mitigation plan. So, talking with, talking with Regional Planning Commission, they felt that the best room might try to do another local, a municipal planning grant. The cost is about eleven thousand. We don't have it in our budget. I didn't want the town to have that, but we do have ten percent matching fund in the Planning Commission's budget to handle that. They were also talking about maybe consolidating some towns and doing some, but right now, all those were expiring, and then they cut all that, all the funding that normally supports it. What it would mean is that any, we'll be able to do hazard mitigation grants and buyouts and other FEMA-based grants, which may not happen right now anyway. But there's also emergency relief and assistance funding score, or an ERAF, that would be lowered on our priority for the state and five percent less funds that were available from the state. So, going on Regional Planning Commission's guidance, feel it's important to, when we did approve it at, at Planning Commission, we feel it's important to try to get the grant, even though the grant deadline application is November third, so it's right around the corner. One good thing is the grant that we did for the town plan, for the municipal planning grant, has a lot of baseline data in there, and then we just need to modify and change some things. We're trying to work on that right now, and what I would need from the, from the Select Board to support that would be a resolution to support municipal planning grant for the local hazard mitigation plan. And I'll open up the questions or comments here.
What, what you're applying for, is it pretty much a rewrite of what we already have, right?
We have it there, been changes such as, you know, comfortable placement, partial dam removal, a few other, a few other things in this, in the state, Act one twenty-one, which is, which is new. So, there are a few impacts. The hazard mitigation plan is five years, not eight years like the town plan. So, a little, a little bit, a little bit quicker cycle on, on that one. So, some of the, the mapping will remain the same, maybe not. I was, I was told by the Central Mountain Regional Planning Commission to just plan on eleven thousand dollar figure. It used to be ten or, ten or eleven. They used to say, they said just plan on eleven thousand for that. And if, if this doesn't make the, the cycle right now, for some reason, there is a second round of grants in the spring. I believe they usually open in March and then have a deadline on that. So, trying to keep, you know, backup plans too, if there's, if there are other issues that come up.
Well, I know from experience on these floods the last few years, that floodplain mapping and that is pretty accurate, I mean, very accurate actually, a hundred year, five hundred year. We've been through it all in the last couple of years. As far as culverts go, we've upgraded some, but ain't a large amount of culverts. I mean, I just can't see eleven thousand dollars to upgrade our plan, other than, I mean, just, I mean, we're going to put matching grants, it'll be eleven hundred dollars for, probably take half a day for somebody to put these new culverts. We're putting about four or five major culverts, rest of them are just standard eighteen inch, for the most part, I don't know. What do you think, Dave? I mean, it's just.
I don't know.
Floodway lines aren't going to change. I mean, they're, they've proven, tested that they're accurate. I don't know, I just don't, see, I just can't see it. I mean, I don't see where you can get eleven thousand into doing something like that. You got to update the dates and stuff like that, resubmit it.
Okay. I know we did a lot of like rewriting on the last, the last go-around. We had several issues back and forth with Vermont Emergency Management and then with FEMA. But like you said, I think, you know, a lot of that should be pretty good, it's just some of the changes like the Act one twenty-one flood mitigation and things like that. So, I'm not certain, I'm just going on what the Regional Planning Commission was.
They're always looking for something to do with it, make money. I've served on it for a long time, I know how that operates. There's nothing against it, I mean, that's what they're there for. But, you know, rewriting the town plan's a different animal than this flood thing. You're, you're pretty much bound by what the flood laws are already. The federal government settles out, all the floodplain lines, elevations and stuff are in casting stone for a long time. Like I said, everything we've seen that happened, they're very accurate.
Okay.
I just, I mean, it's eleven thousand dollars for the whole deal, but town's going to throw eleven hundred into it. I don't even see if it's, you could do the whole thing for like.
Okay, so that's something maybe we could do.
But that's just my opinion, I mean, I'm not just one of five here.
So, can, if I remember correctly, last time or a couple of times ago, you were talking about like a grant for like twenty-five-ish thousand dollars?
That's for the town, the town plan that we currently have under contract.
Okay, so is that money still good? We're all set with that?
That's, that's set, yeah.
Okay, so what you're talking about here isn't the town plan, it's?
It's the local hazard mitigation plan.
Meditation, okay. And that's completely separate than the?
That's correct, yeah.
Town plan, okay. And the eleven thousand, that's money that this, that it would cost to redo this with the state? I know it's a grant, but?
Yes.
Like what's, if we're re, rewriting the town plan and the mitigation plan, and then we have to submit them to the state, I'm assuming there's fees with that? And that's what these grants are supposed to cover, is that?
That, that, that's part of it, but, you know, they probably have to look, look at that closely to see what a final number on the grant would be.
Yeah.
Maybe it's a lot less than that. Just going by their general guidance on that.
Do you, do you have hard numbers for, okay, are, are these two plans are done, and they say, okay, now when you submit them, this is how much it's going to cost, and then?
I, I don't have that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's kind of part of the process is to.
Is, does it change? Is it variable based on the town or population, or? I, I don't know how any of this works, so I'm just trying to, so I don't know like, when the, when the town, if our town submits a new updated plan, what, is there a set fee from the state, or? It's twenty-five thousand dollars just to rewrite some things, does seem like, or the eleven thousand, seems like a lot.
Right.
But I don't know if it's just because that's what the state charges, or?
Well, it's what Central Mountain Regional Planning Commission is charging.
Okay.
The town plan's a lot more involved than the hazard mitigation plan.
Yeah.
The town plan, you know, town changes over the years, in different areas, town growth, different types of activities, towns, you have to keep that up. But this flood thing, water goes to the valley and it comes up to a certain level. It goes through these culverts and there isn't, nothing really changes, other than they're, they'll go to the hundred year mark or over the hundred year mark, but we know everything's well mapped to the whole county area and outline areas. We've changed either four or five major culverts since the last thing was done, but those are very easily, easily available. Jackie's got all the information on the hydraulic studies and everything like that. I mean, this whole deal, could matter, change a few culprit sizes, a few days on a thing, could be done in a day's time. I just.
We're, we're fine.
How many, how many different ways could you make it? I mean, it's just.
Yeah, we're fine, you know, digging into it more and to see, you know, what we can do on our end too, like minimum, minimum, we're just trying to.
I, I'm just curious, like, is there a set to, to submit this plan, it's this much? To submit this plan, it's this much? It's a set amount, or is it dependent on the town, or?
There's, there's no fee, this is just the rewriting cost.
Okay.
It's not a scale, it's just what it costs.
You either have to hire engineer to rewrite it, or consultant, or Regional Planning Commission, I believe is doing a lot of their own stuff now, you have to pay them to do it, so.
So, whatever they say.
At some point, common sense needs to prevail, some of this stuff, I mean, it's just, I know they're trying to make work for themselves, but in this case, they know where it's near eleven thousand to do this unless you have some gold-plated fancy plant like it, you know, just, everything's there, nothing's changed. I mean, just better change a few dates.
I, I, I kind of agree with that a little bit. I, I, I think we'd, I would like to see it just maintained as it is till springtime, because there has been culvert upgrades here and there in various places, which is going to resolve or make it better for the, for the future. It has been not very well, pretty good, the stuff. So, I, I would make the suggestion to maybe revisit this come springtime and bring it back to the table, if there's any change. We will see, the town people, town crew, we'll see that, we'll see what the changes are. So, that's my, that's my thoughts.
You have a certain date you have to have this in by, or?
Pardon me?
What's a certain, what's a certain date that you have to have this all done by?
Uh, November third, the application deadline.
For the grant.
That's, that's pretty quick anyway.
Yeah.
Certainly, certainly fine, pushing things on.
Yeah, I mean, there's just about them applying for a grant.
Yeah, but we have to match.
But? Oh, we have to match the whole thing?
Ten percent.
Well, that's ten percent, which is the eleven hundred dollars.
Without knowing what the final cost is going to be?
Well, it'd be, it'll give or take eleven thousand dollars, ten percent, eleven hundred, but it's whether we need it or not, you know?
Somebody could sit down with Jackie for a couple of hours and get all the culvert sizes and use what we got, just update, change the dates, and it'd be just as good as needed. Unless somebody could show me where they're going to need to spend eleven thousand dollars to that, I mean, that's crazy. I've done it, been around it a long time, and I know what it involves.
We're good with that.
Can you start breathing?
No, it sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
David, I guess you have next?
Uh, I'm cordially checked, you know, because I'm on a land day, looking at the airport straight about the master here. So, so far through the end of September, we've run, created a setting to call the Williams Town. But I think the average here compared to past members, last year was a little busier. We did, for those who did pay attention to the news or whatever, or seeing the weather for the time of darkest we are, we did just purchase a set of ambulance ads for our fleet. It'll look a little bit different than our other six, it's man-style, because that's going to be primarily used for just transports out of the hospital and the local facilities, not really going to affect the nine-one-one side. If the crews come back for call, maybe it's extra healthy, you might see them on the scene somewhere, but it won't be a primary nine-one-one unit. Mostly do non-emergency transfer work. It's a little more fast effective, the fuel mileage is a little better, so we opt to use that, follow the truck, so when the weather, we can still move those patients efficiently. You might also see more ambulances rolling around, since Jack has been busy, so we did add, we're staffing a fifth ambulance for nine-one-one work on our busiest days right now, which are Thursday and Friday during the day. So, when trucks go out on calls, we rotate them around to try to keep response times under control, keep resources, you know, locally to the communities that we serve. In doing that, over the last three or four months, we have shaved a little bit of time off our response times in all of our communities, because we can move those extra trucks and those things. So, we've been hovering around, I think, I'd have to pull the doubt, last year had eight and a half minutes from the time we called the ambulance on scene in Williams Town, and now we're just pretty close to eight minutes, just over eight minutes and two seconds. So, it does help us to be able to have staff and resources where we need to. And I think that's about all I got for you. Any other questions?
Anybody have any questions, David? Dave, could you, could you hang around as a item on the new business for dispatches?
Yeah, and we're, much like you guys, we're getting, you know, getting rolling into budget season, so hopefully we'll have some sort of a projection on next year's budget. Our goal is to keep it the same, the per capita rates, as we have last couple of years, so more to come, more to come on that.
Thank you. Any other announcements, public announcements? Okay, next item is approval of the warrants. One of them is for Mike Comney, S B twenty-two, one-six-eight, so we'll just hold that out. Do the other two?
Yeah.
S B two-two, one-six-five, one-six-six, one-six-seven, and one-six-nine. Have a motion on those four?
I made motion on those four, as I was writing.
Second that.
Motion second, any discussion?
Could we also make twenty-two, one-six-seven its own vote, because there's fire department listed on that, so I can't, doesn't matter either way, I just can't vote on that one specifically.
Okay.
We can.
So, what would be the three? One-six-six, which one was it you said you wanted to?
Twenty-two, one-six-seven has fire department.
Six-seven.
Related.
Okay, so it'd be one-six-five, one-six-six, and one-six-nine. Can you amend your motion to that? Can you amend your?
I amend my motion to those three.
Just a second, Scott.
Yep.
Thanks, great discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now on to the fire one for S B two-two, one-six-seven. Have a motion on that?
I made motion as approved, red, as written.
Motion second, any discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, wait, you want to take over? One-six-eight?
All right. Need a, yeah, need approval on S B two-two, one-six-eight.
Make motion.
Okay, somebody second it?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made, seconded, and any discussion?
Just, I guess I, what were the numbers originally on this? Because it's, what was the total? But, I mean, things have changed because of the incorrect mathematics in the beginning. What was the original? I know we discussed this last meeting, I just can't remember.
Seventy, seventy-four.
Thousand, so it's a thousand.
It's a total, but that included all of Flint, which we, we helped out.
So, this has completely, and this is, everything is done on Pleasant and Hebert?
Correct.
Yeah.
Nick did.
I don't want to up, I just want to.
Yep.
We were thirty feet short on Hebert Road, as my plane, you know, what we had measured, and what we had between Pleasant Street and Hebert Road, we had, what was it, East Angeles or something like that?
Yeah.
So, it was pretty close to Washington, you know, the numbers that we had that night last meeting.
Let's go with that.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll approve that.
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody in?
Nope.
Thanks. Okay, next item is do payroll warrant, the ten-five, what do you call it?
What do you call it?
Yeah. I say ten-six, though. Did you say ten-five? That's what I say.
Yeah.
She says ten-five. Okay, can I hear motion on that?
I made the mo, oh.
Go ahead.
Make the motion approve.
Okay, your second.
Yep.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was saying.
Okay, next item is the Select Board, minutes, nine-twenty-two, twenty-five. Have a motion on that?
Make the motion approve.
S B seconded.
Seconded.
Okay, motion seconded, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Hold. Town manager report, Jackie?
Delinquent taxes as of today is ninety-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and eleven cents. Water is six thousand, two-hundred-and-seven dollars and eighty-two cents, and sewer is twelve thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. Under highway, we've completed the municipal Rose Grant for two thousand twenty-five, which is, was Chelsea Road, and we've completed the two thousand twenty-six grant, which was Stella Road. The intersection of Route fourteen and Business Center, the paving has been completed. We've got seventy-five hundred yards of sand put up so far. The Snowbridge Drainage Project was completed. Pleasant Street and Hebert Road have been completed, the drainage projects. And the one section by Cubbies on Flint Road has been completed, that drainage project. Cogswell Street Culvert has been replaced, and the manhole, manholes have been repaired. Paving was supposed, they were supposed to start work today, but I don't know how far they got, because they were, it was being delayed because of the, the rain this morning, but they're, they're going to be starting tomorrow, so that'll be completed here in the next three or four days. The FEMA buyout for thirty-two and forty-six Meadow Street, I closed on the property on Friday morning. So, the town now owns that piece of property. The, I spoke with the contractor, and as soon as they get the file paperwork from the state, from the closing, they're ready to roll with the asbestos testing. Once that's done, if there's no asbestos, then they can move forward with the demolition. If there is asbestos in the main house, then there, they'll have to, it'll have to be abated. But the goal is to have the house and the mobile home completely demoed and removed by the end of December. They'll be back in the spring to, to seed it in and make green space. So, that's where we stand with that.
Question? Okay, if there is the asbestos.
Okay, if there is the asbestos, can they do the rest of that? Well, that's being dealt with.
Yeah, I mean, the, the mobile home's not going to have any asbestos in it. But, I mean, that's not going to take very long to, to demo and move out. So it's not going to take very long for them to take down both of those pieces of property. Um, but that's the next step. I did send them the letter stating the town didn't require any permits today, so that's all been cleared to the state. So, um, the end is in sight as far as getting the final cleanup of that piece of property over there. Been a long eighteen months. Um, the, uh, Heidi Sevins pig case, we go back to court tomorrow afternoon for the second half of the, the hearing. Um, the, the one that was ten-one was supposed to be a change of plea. And, uh, her signing the pigs over to the state, she changed her mind and refused to change her plea. And she was refusing to sign the pigs over, so that's what this hearing is for. As far as the second half of that, the judge will decide, because she's not going to change her plea, then we're going to go to a jury trial. So the jury trial will probably be in the beginning of January, I believe. They'll do the jury draw in November, and then it'll be the first part of January for, for that. Um, the right-of-way easements for Old Town Road have been recorded in the land records, um, for our turnaround, and the right-of-way easements for Weir Road have been recorded in the land records. Um, and the project's going to start next week, um, building the turnaround on Weir Road. Uh, streetlights are fixed. There is one that has a bad LED box, so it goes on and off, but the new one's been ordered. So as soon as that comes in, they will replace that. Um, I got the Chelsea Road paid, patch paving quote, there's five spots on Chelsea Road that need to be fixed up there. Um, Roger went up, he marked it all out with paint, and Mindy sent me the quote this morning. It's fourteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars to do the five areas. There's a twelve-by-eighty-eight, a fifteen-by-eighteen, an eighteen-by-five, a four-by-twenty-five, a twelve-by-seven, and a twelve-by-two-hundred-and-twenty-two feet section that needs to be patched. So I need to get approval tonight for that, um, because they will be doing it the second week in November, um, earlier if possible.
Sounds reasonable to me for all the jumping around that you do.
Right, that's what I thought. So I do need an, um, approval of that.
Does through RG paving or?
Yep, yep, yeah, Roger, RG paving.
You'll, you'll say with that, what did you come up with, Dave?
Yeah, we're not marked today.
So you need, uh, so do I make a motion to approve that or disapprove it?
I'll make a motion, approve that.
Second?
I'll second it.
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, we have a new resident in town. His name is Brett Plavcek. Didn't kill his last name. Um, but he wants to start up a neighborhood trash pickup. Um, he's looking for volunteers. He bought the, uh, Cowboy Church property up on sixty-four. Um, he's, he's looking for help keeping Williamstown beautiful. We're organizing a community trash cleanup along Route fourteen and Route sixty-four on Sunday, November second, at nine AM to twelve noon, weather permitting. We need caring and committed neighbors to lend a hand. Volunteers details, bring your own gloves, any trash grabbing devices you may have, and two sturdy trash bags. Bring a vehicle to help transport collected trash. Each volunteer is asked to dispose of the two full bags of trash after the event. Any safety gear, vests, cones, traffic flex would be greatly appreciated. You may choose to direct traffic instead of picking up trash, just let him know. And I've got his contact information. I've put it on the Old Town Chat page, the, that other Williamstown page. Barb's putting it on the town Facebook page, and I put it on the website. Um, and I'm posting it around town for him. But he said, new resident purchased the property, they moved here from, I believe he said Pittsburgh, or Phila- Philadelphia or Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. So it's something that he wants to start doing. We're having an increasingly issue with people dumping, and it's, it's just getting ridiculous.
We're not doing it, Tim.
I just, I get another call on Grandview today, uh, not the same issue as the buckets, but, um, the resident up there did find a name. He reached out to me late this afternoon, and I told him to call Orange County. And, uh, the deputy's going there tomorrow to get the piece of mail. It's, uh, somebody that lives on Palace Road. So, um, but it's, it's daily lately with people calling up and saying, you know, a couch has been thrown here, a mattress here, a chair here. There's a pool table up by the, uh, on sixty-four, up by the.
Water tank. Solar, solar farm.
There's solar farm. Um.
And the pole off there, by the solar farm?
Yeah, and, uh, somebody asked if I could reach out to them with the cameras. I'm gonna get contact information, because I don't even know who's owns the solar farm. Change his hands.
I'll, I'll do future.
Yearly. Um, so anyway, if anybody's interested, um, I have Brett's contact information, or it's on the website, or it'll be on the town, uh, Facebook page. And then I just need to confirm the, which is actually on the, the agenda, is for the November third, first budget we group up. Um.
Everybody good with the?
That's the, excuse me, that's the first Monday of November?
Yes.
Yeah.
David, you guys on it?
Um.
Yeah, nevermind.
Oh, God.
Roger?
I would think you might want to reach out to some of these organizations that get tax exempt in this town to kick in and help, you know?
So, organizations, you're thinking? What organizations are you thinking?
Yeah, U Sports, uh, Little Town, uh, Moonshiner, Fish and Game.
Fish, all the, Fishgate Club. Yeah, maybe I'll get some hands on.
I mean, might be worth just reaching out and asking if they can help out.
I can certainly reach out to Parents for U Sports. I'm gonna hold my breath because we can't get anybody to help us for U Sports, so. But I can certainly post it and ask.
So about three hours, don't feel quite.
My feeling is that they're not willing to, you know, help the town out. Why should, does Scott care if we help you out?
Well, so, David, you, Jackie? Okay, on to new business. Uh, attorney chief has dispatch issues he wants to talk about, William?
Uh, hold on a second, I'm going to move away from the table, conflict measures.
Uh, so, this isn't the first time I've brought this up. Um, more like, uh, I brought this up on a one-to-one basis with most of your, some of you. But Dave and I have been, you know, have been trying to resolve this issue, um, outside of the select board, and nothing seems to be working. And, uh, there's some things that we've tried that just don't stick. And, uh, we keep going around and around and around. It's been almost two years. Uh, the, the contract with Berry Town EMS is contracted with Lamoil Dispatch for their dispatching services. And we're contracted with Berry City Police Department for our dispatch services. And personally, where I think a lot of the, a lot of the issues are coming into play is between the two dispatch agencies not working together. And so I'll kind of go down the list of things that I've done to try to resolve this problem as well as, as, and Dave, feel free to chime in on some of the things that he's done as well, uh, to try to resolve this. But, uh, so I've talked with the BSP nine-on-one call center area. Then when you call nine-on-one, it runs down a list of, uh, situations that deems whether fire goes, EMS goes, or who, who all goes, and then they make the decision to call whoever. Uh, so when it's, comes in for an accident call, they're supposed to call both dispatch agencies because of the way it's set up in Williamstown. I don't think that's always happened. And I, I know for a fact it's not always happening. And I'm a strong believer that if the ambulance is going through an automobile accident because the patient needs to be checked on, that the significance of that accident, there's either, there's either debris, there's either fluids leaking, there's either traffic that needs to be done. There's, there's a whole slew of things that go with both, both agencies and why we need, why I feel it's important that we need to go together. Uh, so nine-on-one wasn't really perceptive on changing anything because it was clear that if they, they changed something for one town, they'd have to change it for everybody. And they're not gonna deal, they weren't gonna do that. So my next attack was trying to communicate with Berry City Dispatch and try to resolve this problem between the, excuse me, between the two dispatch agencies. And they weren't one hundred percent perceptive, claiming that they don't always listen to the Lamoil, uh, Dispatch and Berry Town EMS, of course. Which I understand because Berry Town EMS responds to several communities, not just Williamstown. So to pick up the word Williamstown, or going to a call in Williamstown, is probably practically impossible. I tried reaching out to Lamoil Dispatch themselves to try to put, you know, I said, name a price on that I can bring to you guys as to how much it's going to cost for Lamoil to literally pick up the phone and call Berry City Dispatch to have us notified. Didn't show much interest in wanting to do that. Uh, we've talked, Steve and I have talked, uh, one-on-one, separate meetings, and we've tried things as such as, uh, you know, when, once Lamoil got, or got their call and they head out to the call, that they'd get on the Berry Dispatch and make sure the fire department was notified. That hasn't really worked out that great either. And correct me if I'm wrong, it just seems you got an empty amount of employees that come to the station and they just don't, don't remember to do it. Uh, and, 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 and I agree that it really isn't up to Berry Town EMS to decide or make sure the fire department's being notified. Uh, so that really hasn't worked out. Uh, maybe it worked a couple of times. Um, I know I've heard some of, uh, Berry Town coming out of the station asking Lamoil if the fire department's been notified, and their answer is, I don't know. And it, why would Lamoil know? It's not, we don't contract for them to, for anything. Uh, so that, that, those are just the things. And why I, kind of backing up of why I'm strong about this is plain and simple, the safety aspect of it. The fire department is trained, has some training for scene protection at automobile accidents. Truck is specifically designed to position in a manner so that a distracted driver will hit that truck, or hit, yeah, hit the fire truck and go off away from the scene so that it's not going to hurt or kill anyone else that's working the, working the actual accident scene. So you take that blocker away, we call it a blocker, and I get it, no one wants to wreck the five-hundred-thousand-dollar fire truck. I don't want to either, but I'd rather replace the five-hundred-thousand-dollar fire truck than someone like. So that blocker truck, you take that away, and now you've got an ambulance that parks straight for the road. You've got BSP that parks straight for the road, opening yourself up to more opportunities to get hit. So it's, it's not to me, and I, I'll talk on behalf of the whole fire department, it's not that we just want to get the fire calls to go on fire calls, it's that we want to be able to protect the area, protect the scene. And it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily go just with automobile accidents. You know, we're starting to find, you know, dispatches are forgetting to call the ambulance for chimney fire. Forgetting to call the ambulance to structure fires. Forgetting to call the ambulance for brush fires. All these things that we need to have an ambulance there for in the event somebody get hurt on the fire scene. Uh, so just some incidents, so that I'm not, you know, taking up all your time. But all this, a couple of incidents that just communication should have been there and it wasn't. October of last year, we had a wicked bad accident down on, just before the call, where no word was relayed to the fire department that there was entrapment of this patient until we'd gotten there, making the resources that we needed to get that person out, delayed even more because we didn't have that information. And it, it was a simple, get on the radio and report what you have. Uh, we had another two-car accident with entrapment up on Perry Road, where again, we weren't notified of entrapment, and the ambulances were there before the fire department. We had a brush fire back in May, where I had to get an ambulance because dispatch wouldn't call an ambulance. Uh, up to last week, CO call on Construction Hell Road, I had to get an ambulance because they didn't, didn't get one coming. Reason why we need them at CO calls is we don't know if these people have been exposed to COs. They need to be checked out to cover, cover us that we didn't just say, oh, you said you're fine. We'll, you know, we'll go with that. And then up to last, last week, and I don't know if you heard about, heard this, but we got a call for an ambulance because one was not dispatched to us. We were told there was not one available. They eventually had an off-duty crew member or something come in. One person came with an ambulance. And then they had to leave our scene to go to another, another incident. So, kind of, I'm, I'm just, I've run out of ideas. I've run out of, uh, things to do. And I know Dave's pending a, a meeting with, uh, with the dispatch agencies and the two of us. I just don't have a very good feeling anything good is going to come out of that, meaning that we're going to resolve anything. You know, we've been talking for this for almost two years. I guess what I'm sitting here asking you guys is, is to, I need you guys to get involved in this. You're the ones that pay the bills to both our dispatch agency, to Berry Town EMS, and help me get something resolved before somebody gets hurt or somebody gets killed. If you guys want me to wash my hands of it and just say, you've done everything you could do, I'll do that. You won't hear another word out of me about this after tonight. But I, I can't sit back and just keep seeing these miscommunication calls happen, and then something's going to happen. Something, I just, we've had two close calls in Williamstown on the interstate alone and on Route fourteen, where somebody almost, quite honestly, a member of Berry Town EMS and I should be dead now if we didn't move out of the way five seconds prior. And it's dangerous up there, it's dangerous everywhere, because everyone kept their phones out, taking pictures. So I'm just sitting here giving you my opinion, how I fear something's going to happen. Do not crack down and get this dispatch communication figured out because it works in other towns with the two, with Lamoil and Williamst-, uh, Lamoil and other towns. I won't name them, but they, it works. You hear it on the radio, it works. And I don't, I just cannot figure out why it won't work here. That's all I got.
I'd be interested to hear what Dave's thoughts are on it.
Uh, so William and I have talked extensively. Um, you know, part of it is a, it's going to lead to a system issue with the nine-on-one board. So, you know, when you call nine-on-one, there's a nine-on-call figure. Um, so they're going to ask you a series of questions. They're going to go through, uh, it's probably on a computer now, it used to be a flip chart. You know, motor vehicle crash, are there injuries? If the answer is no, you know, they flip the card, they ask. Motor vehicle crash, are there injuries? If the answer is no, you know, they flip the card, they ask you another question, are there any clues? The answer is no, they flip the card. So they go through a series of questions and that dictates to them what the response should be. Police only, police in EMS, police EMS and fire, you know, what whatever that is. So, you know, there's calls that the police get called to and no fire EMS get called to based on that algorithm. Then the police get there, they decide they need, you know, rescue or fire or whatever the case is. So it starts, as he alluded to, at the nine one board or the nine one call figures. And then when there is an instance where, you know, fire, EMS and police are all needed, the nine one structure is that they notify any of the dispatch centers that need to send, you know, units. So they'll call, well, they'll dispatch the police if it's the police or they'll call Orange County if it's the sheriff's department. And then they'll call Lemoil and Berry City. Where it break, where it breaks down a little bit is that when they, when their call determined is that they don't need or the call taker feels based on that criteria, that they don't need a specific resource. So that's when those calls don't go out, don't go out to the fire department or don't go out to EMS or much like William just alluded to, the CL aren't, right? So the call taker determined based on the information they were gathering that there was no symptoms probably. I'm, I have no idea, I haven't looked at that call, but my assumption is that they based, you know, there were no symptoms. So in that run card, it's fire only, so they dispatch the fire department. You know, so we are under statewide nine one one system, so that's all dictated down to us by the state levels. Lemoil is a nine one one answering center, so they follow those guidelines. So that probably is part of that, why they're resistant to change because they, the state, the state tells them when to change because they're an actual call center. So as William said, we're working on a separate meeting with, you know, Lemoil, Berry City and the two of us to see if there's some common ground. Part of the issue is the state does not operate a statewide CAD system. Valcore is a law enforcement data collection system, it's not a true periodic dispatching system. So it has limitations in what information can be stored, like run cards can't be stored. Some dispatch centers, Shelburne, Hartford, Burlington, there's a few dispatch centers around the state that have CAD systems that can store that information in them, which makes it a lot easier, who, you know, who do you call in what situations? Valcore is not that savvy. There is a statewide task force looking at dispatching, I don't know where, it's not LAM. So there's, it's 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 not an isolated issue to here, you know, we run into it with, like I just said, the police departments. They'll get called to an accident or they'll get called to something and then they're the ones on scene calling us. And every time you step that down, right, the call taker takes the call, they transfer it to a dispatch center or somebody else who dispatches the call. So every time you go through one of those layers, there's a, there's a faction of human error potentially involved, right? So I don't know, I would have to look at the specific data per town, but there is, there's human error involved in, you know, you know, in every community. And I don't know, you know, what that percentage of human error is, if the state probably has a number that they find acceptable. But yeah, that's the reality of where we're at.
I have a question to that is why can't, I get what, I get what BSP is doing, I understand that and I understand they're not gonna change anything for Williams Town. But why can't we do something in Williams Town that's different? I mean, why can't we do better? I guess that's my point, is why can't we do something better? And it can't, personally, I think it can be done between our, you know, between the dispatch or, you know, that's this thing, no, they don't wanna do it. Not a matter of it can be done, it's something they want to do.
And hopefully that's something, what he said, that, you know, we can figure out in that meeting with the four of us because we'll be, we'll have, you know, one of the dispatch center, Berry Cities and us and, you know, hopefully we can get some of that answered. We were hopeful that active nine one one was updating some stuff and then they could select calls by zip code because then we could have those calls loaded into, like William said, that technology's not quite there yet, so.
I have some other question. Have you talked to the Vermont Criminal Justice Council? Because they're like, so I work for the state, they're like dotted line connected to the Department for Public Safety, for Public Safety. And they do a lot of the rulemaking for these kinds of things. And they're the ones that mandate the data collection or part of the data collection that you're talking about. So it might be worth even trying to reach out to somebody there. And I believe that members of the public can attend, so you could even just go to one of their next meetings and maybe even raise this because I think that DPS should, or at large, should probably know that this is happening because there are obviously a lot of system issues, like you said. And I just have a quick question. So when you said Hartford, Burlington and the other.
Shelburne.
Are they using, are they using Stillman? And is that a CAD system? Because from my understanding, Stillman is actually worse, I don't wanna say that, than Valcore is. So that just, I know Hartford uses Stillman.
So Hartford's upgraded to whatever motor rollers new.
Got it, okay.
Or it is, I don't know, Tyler, I know it's also broken, I'm not sure.
It's Valcore because it was created in the city of Burlington.
Yeah.
Valcore is an island in like Champlain, if you didn't know that. So that's why Burlington uses it.
I love that. Yeah, so I was just curious because I work for the Officer Racial Equity in the Division of Racial Justice Statistics and we do a lot of work with municipal policing and with the state as far as their like data systems that they have. And again, if that's an avenue that you haven't tried, I would highly recommend it because that's kind of their job is to make sure that those things are all being coordinated appropriately. Yeah.
I got a question for William. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds to me like any type of ambulance is called to an accident, you want the fire trucks to go to?
I, I mean personally, yes. I know the department would too, but again, it's not, it's not to, oh, we wanna go on a fire call. It's to, you know, just protect the scene. And then it just, to me, like I said before, if the accident is significant enough where the ambulance needs to check on patients and then obviously, you know, it's a decent crash, you know. To me, I look at it rather as safe than sorry, but it is.
Well, the only thing I can see is, it'd be all good if we had a full-time fire staff, full-time in-house fire department. This is a volunteer fire department. I know for a fact, a couple people I know that got off the fire department because they got sick of being called these traffic things up on the interstate and stuff, they had, they were trying to work, you know, their normal job, you know, once they get a fire call or some job.
Their old timers, yeah.
That does happen. And I just, you know, we don't have a budget to be sending a fire truck out every time there's an accident. I mean, we don't budget for that nowadays.
Well, payroll budget, yeah.
They could cover all these every time they have those rolls you guys go in?
Why couldn't we? I mean, again, it's not, to me, I don't, I guess I don't look at it for the money aspect. I don't look at it for the, again, I go back to safety.
I know you're trying to do the right thing, but we.
If you guys don't want us to go, we don't want to go, I'm just, it will come back to bite you guys in the butt. I'm just saying, it will, it will. And again, I'm not, it's not, again, it's not a matter of cracking up a call or paying people, it's just safety. But I I hear what you're saying and we don't, we don't go to the slide offs like we used to. When I first got on, we were always going to slide offs on the interstate. And I think BSP has done a good job about about mitigating that. But yeah, if the ambulance is going to an automobile accident, the fire department should be going and vice versa. Fire department's going to something other than an alarm activation, I feel the ambulance should be going. And full-time staff, I get what you're saying there, but this ambulance ain't sitting here twenty-four seven. You know that, everyone knows that they don't take a sitting here. So it's no different than us coming from home or them coming from Berlin to get to Williams Town. And so I don't, I don't see what the full-time has to do with it. Our, our percentages of people coming during the day are probably the best I've ever seen them in in eighteen years of being on the department. And obviously night times are good too, so it's, I, but I see what you, I see what you're saying.
I did, that's why they get their protocol first, what does it need level, but it needs a fire truck to go or not. Seems to be like a good idea, but it might not work.
Yeah, I understand that, but you get a lot of nine one one calls where they are driving by and seeing an oil gale accident and they just, they don't know if someone's hurt, they don't know if it's, they just keep on, keep on keeping on. But so the nine one one dispatcher can only go off of what, what information they're given by the caller.
I just wanna say historically, I mean, I started in EMS actually with Berry Town, but when I became a firefighter in Williams Town, post-college of two thousand nine-ish, the fire department got dispatched for every motor vehicle accident. And then moving back in Williams Town in two thousand seventeen, I was still employed as a firefighter in a different city, so I was not able to volunteer for the fire department. But every time we had an accident on I nine or any, it could be a class four road, the fire department was dispatched. It's just the last two years, it's not a financial thing in the sense that it's been going on since I was probably, it's been going on for twenty years except for the last two years. That's, that's the concern is we have two different dispatch agencies unwilling to talk to each other. And I will be honest, I was at one of those automobile accidents and it involved someone within our community. And it was quite daunting that, because in Williams Town, citizens don't know this, we don't do technical rescue in the sense if someone gets into a bad car accident, we don't have jaws of life, we utilize Berry Town. And the ambulance was on scene, I think, for five minutes without ever saying there was an entrapped person. And that's really bad. We all have relatives and it's not a he said, she said, it's as a firefighter, as an EMT, how do you want to be treated? And if someone's not dispatching, you know, I don't want my child trapped in a car. And if they are trapped in the car, I want the first person there to say, hey you, it's me, we need this. And that's for all of us, it's not if you're better or worse than us, that's how we feel as human beings. As simple as if we're leaving the meeting tonight, right, the first person out might hold the door open for other people. So the first piece, person on scene or first agency on scene should say, hey, we're capable of X, Y and Z, but we don't have the capability of this. And it's, it's a communication issue. And again, I, like I said, historically, we've never had issues other than when I was on Williams Town ambulance, when Williams Town ambulance still existed for a chimney fire or a motor vehicle blast and that there was no patients, a lot of the EMTs would just be like, you still need us chief, General William? Especially a chimney fire, that would be a good scenario because they have things to do in the middle of the day. But they went, it wasn't a concern that way. So it's, I just think the gap is the last two years, it's just a communication issue. We're speaking one language, they're speaking another.
I used to be a firefighter down in Brooklyn. And to me, a fire truck's called, you should have the ambulance there. If the ambulance is called, you should have someone from the fire department there, a fire truck. You don't have to call a whole fleet right away. But those few minutes between somebody getting there and not doing anything like Tyler mentioned, five minutes, that's life and death in some situations. And I don't think that's negotiable. I really don't. And you, you talk about your budget, at the end of the year, how much more is it gonna cost you? It's probably gonna save a life. And whatever that cost is, well, money well spent if it saves a life. You know, you can count beans all you want, but you gotta get to reality. This is ridiculous to nickel and dime over somebody's life. And sooner or later, it is gonna cost somebody's life because those few minutes are very valuable on a scene. You have a structure, a chimney fire, it turns into a structure fire, which it very well can. Because we had a neighbor a few years ago, started out as a fire, they thought was a chimney fire, but come to find out it was a structure itself caught from the chimney.
And that went.
And, and the whole house was burnt. Now, if somebody had been in there.
Well, he lost a dog.
He did, lost, lose his dog in his cab. But if somebody had been in there and couldn't get out.
And I was gonna go in to see if I could get the dog out.
I know. So, you know, we're talking and it could have been a person.
Could have been.
We've gotta stop nickel and diming over lives. It's ridiculous. I'm ashamed to be, I'm ashamed to be associated with a group that would do that. To be honest with you.
All I do is ask, ask a question.
Yeah, I know.
I have no problem if the voters of this town or townspeople of this town wanna have a full-time fire department right alongside the ambulance department, they'll decide that, not me. But budgets are made in every department of this town, whether it's ambulance, fire, railway department, general fund, library, everybody has a budget. It's a simple question, if that was budgeted to go out a hundred percent of the time.
I hear what you're saying.
Because this is a volunteer fire department.
I know, and I hear what you're saying, but I happen to know from being on a fire department that, that minutes cost, can cost lives. And it's stressful.
No problem what you're saying or don't disagree with it, but we just need to decide if that's the road we wanna go down or if we gotta limit services.
You don't have to call the whole crew either, either way, all you need is one vehicle to start with, have somebody rolling. Because they can probably handle the situation till somebody else gets there, if they're already rolling and it becomes an emergency for them. And, you know, it, it just makes more sense. And you never know if a fire is gonna end up needing an ambulance or if an accident's gonna end up needing a fire department. And like Tyler said, it's become a problem the last two years. Before that, it wasn't. So maybe, and the other thing is, is maybe we should find out through Lemoil and Berry Dispatch, what it would cost for them to automatically call the other one. Because maybe that's what we know.
That's what we've been trying to do.
About maybe, you know, it may be a dollar issue.
No.
I don't. That, that, that's why I presented this to you is I think you guys and Jack, you're the ones that pay the bills. I mean, we pay Berry Dispatch a good amount of money every year, just the fire department. And then, you know, I imagine Berry Town's paying a good amount to Lemoil for their services. So I look at it as we're the customer here, we should be able to make this work. In my opinion, but I, I just wanna go back a little to Larry, what you said there. I might not have explained it right, it's, it's not a matter of being full-time or volunteer. I mean, we, we could have thirty accident calls next month or we could have two accident calls next month. And there's no telling how many accident calls you're gonna get. So to say in order to go to every single accident call, we need to be full-time, that, that's not what I'm getting at. I'm just, you know, if, yes, we are a volunteer and only two, three people can show up. You know, to go to that accident, the best thing we can do is block, take the fire truck and block the scene while they're, they're treating the patient. That's all we get coming in. But that's, that's, you know, if you were to go full-time, you're only gonna get two, three guys to be able to be on a shift anyway. So it's not a matter of full-time versus volunteer. Trust me, if the guys can't make it because they're tied up at work, they're busy, they don't, they don't come. So, you know, you get the ones that can.
Tony, you have a question? So I, I would just like to ask a couple of questions and then kind of give my thoughts on where we're at here. Because it almost seems like there might be kind of two separate things we're trying to accomplish. So do, do you know, William, like with, and even Dave too, but like according to their flip chart thing that they go through, could you say there's instances, because I think there's times when you're saying. Could you say there's instances, because I think there's times when you're saying, we wanna be there, we're not getting called. But is, is there times when you can point and say, well, it was, dispatch didn't follow their thing that they're set in place now? Whether that's, we agree with it or not, but is there times when the dispatch people aren't following that flip chart? And you can say that was the miscommunication, it was on them?
Um, I, I guess I, I can't speak for nine one one whether they are or not. My guts, my guts hopefully say no, that they are doing everything, doing everything right, and I'm sure they are.
Okay.
But what happens to, to, to say, well, who's going to walk that flip chart is. Let's say reality, and then we'll use a car accident as an example. My, you know, we've just been involved in an automobile accident, the car, you know, the car rolled down over the bank. You know, everyone's out, but we need to be evaluated, alright? That's what the, you know, that's the reality.
Yeah.
The nine one one caller gets, I've been involved in an accident, we're out, we're okay, but we'd like to be checked out.
Right.
That would signal just, just the dispatch EMS, when in reality, the car's been rolled down over a bank, a gas leak now. You know, in reality.
Yeah, I, I get all that stuff, like, and there's, there's gonna be human error.
Correct.
Call, they only can respond to the information they get, I get all that. Um, so, so, kind of from everything I'm seeing here, my, just my thoughts on it, you have this meeting coming up. It'd be good to, I don't think we should make any decisions until we get more information from that meeting. Um, and I don't think there's anybody on this board or in this room that's trying to nickel dime saving lives, like, I don't. I don't, I don't think that, right, we, and, and I agree, I, I think that. Fire department should be a safety thing, and I don't think they should, you know, if there's a house and somebody fell down, I don't think the fire department needs to go to that if the ambulance is called to it, but. It's, you know, so, I, I would let, just like to see what happens from this meeting. Um, to get some more information, and you have this other avenue to see if there's something that can come from that. Um, with the information, I didn't catch your name.
I don't think I said my name, but.
Okay.
I'm Laura Carter.
Okay.
You're, you're gonna be involved in that meeting, William, as well?
Hopefully.
Are you in?
Yeah.
And we have nothing to say.
Has, ain't, many of the other towns running into this problem?
Yes. Washington's waiting for me to, we have accidents that we know about, so like, two, three days, maybe.
Has any of them, has any of them been able to fix it?
Well, hearing, you know, hearing what Jim said, Washington's also dispatched off of Berry City, but again, it's. The same thing that we're having, you know.
Can we get more towns to, are there other towns going to this meeting too, besides just you guys, or?
It was just, to pull you and I out of this, just to give the two dispatches their heads together, the two of us, and see if there's. You know, is there, is it a possibility to have, you know, them call every time there's a crash and say. Hey, there's a crash, you know, one way or the other.
Right.
Um, if, if they're, you know, if it's a possibility, is there a cost associated with it, you know, what, you know, what kind of, what are we looking at?
Well, is, is it a matter of changing? To Lamoil?
I was gonna say, could we change?
Yeah, that was my question, I had my hand up.
So, bef, I mean, before we get, like, like Cody said, before there's too many crash decisions made. I just want everyone to understand, and again, we're talking about sometimes just errors in the system, right? So, in the last two months, you know, we do a lot of calls, right? So, in the last two months, we have been dispatched to three other towns as a primary call the other town didn't even know about. The nine one one sent us to a town that thought was our area. Berry City's been dispatched to calls in, last week they called in Berry Town, but they thought that's in Berry City. Northfield has gone to the rest area of Williamstown, up, up on sixty-four, they thought that was in Northfield, so. There is an element of error in the system that we're never gonna fix.
Yep.
So that's the part, like, it's never gonna be perfect, so we've gotta get it to a usable place that everyone's comfortable.
Maybe somebody from the Washington fire department should put this at least also, if they're having the same issues.
I mean, they, they certainly can, we, we run into this with, we, you know. Topson is dispatched by Hanover, um, you know, it, there's, there's. We're in Berlin, and that, they're dispatched by Capitol Dispatch, and there's, there's, we have three dispatches out of Central, so that's.
I, I would think if you guys at this meeting can't figure something out. Then maybe the route would be get all these towns that are having issues to get together, do a letter, whatever it is. Get into the state commission that deals with this and try and push it that route, I mean.
William, you met with Christian, right?
Yes.
Yeah, the, the, the public safety, and I think, basically, from the foundation of William, he was like, we're not interested in change.
Right, well, from one person, but if you can get fifteen towns to say, hey, this is a problem, maybe, but.
Well, there's clearly there's an issue that needs to be dealt with. Second time or third time it's come up in front of us. I'm with Cody in the thoughts that, uh, get as many people as you can get involved in this meeting and. See what comes out of it, then come back and talk to us again about it, let us know what happened or if anything's been resolved. I mean, it's gonna take a little time to figure out if it's gonna change or not.
No, I, I, I'm certainly willing to go to this meeting and get set up. I just know that I've already, I've already tried to do this personally, like, I've already reached out to Lamoil, I've already, you know, thought. I'll do it again, do it again, uh.
You talked, you said you talked to him about what's it gonna cost to do differently? It doesn't seem like it's a money issue, it's just a matter of getting back together, I guess, most, most of it.
It's a, much like anyone that, you know, operates, you know, William the town, or it's a, it's a trading thing, right? Though, are they, are they looking at their, you know, their process, their standard operating procedures, and that's a deviation from their standards, so. That invites error, right, anytime you deviate from your standards, or they're going through their run cards, and, and. That's what, that's what we're gonna go over, come to get them to agree to change their procedure between the two of them. Because they're, I don't think we're gonna get them to agree to deviate, we're gonna have to get it to become their standard.
Sounds like you get a person.
I just wanted to say.
Person here in the front row to help you out.
Uh, if everyone notices up by that window over there, there's a black box that says he dispatched one thing that William. As chief has tried to do, that is a, uh, on a smartphone app. So what Williamstown is doing now to make sure that there is coverage within town. There is a green button that says available, a red button that says unavailable, and then there's a yellow button that's like a yellow light, we're not sure. So that is one thing the fire department is using, because we're paying, that is, I think, part of the budget, right, only. This is just something I think to help, you know, wherever you are. So William did that with the intention of, it is ten o'clock on a Tuesday. Car accident comes in, a structure, whatever, an emergency comes in, he can pull that phone out, and this isn't just a Williamstown thing, I think a lot of, correct, a lot of agencies are doing this in Vermont. And, yep, we have three people available, so he will not say, okay, we have a structure fire, he's gonna start calling. Berry City Dispatch saying, dispatch this, this, and this, because again, it's, the importance is people's safety, it has nothing to do with a measuring contest, we are here to help people. So, that is one thing the fire department is doing, now granted, I will be honest, there are people that I think have been on, have been available for three hundred and seventy days, so. I don't know if that's as super accurate as it should be, but. We're learning.
Okay, the rest of the board in agreement, let's see how this meeting transpires and go from there, I mean, sounds like.
Anything else you could think of that we could try?
I guess, but I mean, uh, honestly. Honestly, when you revisit the contract, again, I think that's when you really need to get something right, I mean, something. We can wait and see what comes out of this meeting, uh, if it happens, and. But I mean, really something needs to be in writing to hold, hold somebody accountable, including the fire department, I mean, you know, we could. You know, we could screw off and not call the ambulance, when we know the ambulance needs to be there, you know, and you have something in writing to. Come back to me and say, what the heck, but I mean, we got no, we got nothing, we got a contract, Berry Town, we're the fire department. And this, this was one of my pet peeves with this whole thing when it happened in twenty-three. This is, we have to work together, you know, they are a contracted EMS provider, we are the fire department. And the two have to work together, and, and on a emergency scene, we do, I mean, we do work together, but it's, it's. Communication, the, the standard operating procedures on how we're gonna work this, there's just nothing, so I. Then all I can do is come to you guys like I am tonight, tell you it's not working, and you make your own opinions and decide, but. I, I got nothing to come back on to say, well, stated here in writing, so.
Let me ask.
Wait to hear what the meeting comes out.
Let me ask you this question, um, obviously Berry Town's got numerous towns that they serve, and they use Lamoil services. Any reason we're married to Berry Dispatch and we couldn't switch to Lamoil?
Even though Berry Dispatch has its flaws with being able to reach certain parts of town. I feel Lamoil is gonna have, we're gonna have harder time being able to communicate with Lamoil because. Berry Town, I mean, I think just correctly have run, even best, they, Berry Town's the best to money in the towers to upgrade their communications with Lamoil. And I think that would be something we would have to do too, because of the. You know, there's parts, there's parts that Berry Town Fire cover that they don't be able to communicate with their dispatcher, um, so. It's, it's definitely a possibility if, if they're willing to entertain it, but, I mean, Berry, Berry's been our dispatcher forever. They've always done a good job, it's just.
I don't think.
Quite honestly, it's just a matter of.
Gotta start working together with each other.
Quite honestly, it's mad, them two working, working together to make sure both are, because there's no, there's no reason. Not to hurt them, but the, not just the accidents, there's no reason an ambulance should have been automatically dispatched to our chimney fire the other night. No reason EMS should have been dispatched to our C O call, you know, there's. There's just no reason, other than it's a different agency. And it, it literally takes me having to get on the radio and request it, and that's fine, but then you got. All these higher-ups in the Capitol neutrality system that don't want you being on the radio so much, so. And they want you to set these run cards up, and you set these, it just doesn't, doesn't work, so. Again, it's just, I come back to you guys are ultimately the boss of the contracts and, and the fire department, and it's. It just seems like I've done, and I think, you know, to Dave's credit, he's done a lot too to try to resolve this, and. Nothing, nothing's changed, so whether it takes a, a strong encouragement that Berry City doesn't wanna. Change their ways, then have to look elsewhere, if that will do it, I don't, I don't know.
I know someone in this room is pretty good at getting the point across. She does, so I know someone in this room is pretty good at getting the point across, and she does a good job at it. My suggestion would be to, uh, have Jackie work with you two and get some results. I don't care, I hear well fuzzy how she does it, but just make it so it works.
I just think, I, I will reach out to the contacts she gave me as well, it's just. Little old Williamstown Fire Department's not gonna change the state of Vermont's nine one one system, all I can do is give them my opinion, but. We have, I just feel we have a way from town of Williamstown and the town of Berry to come up with an agreement with each other. Make sure this is done without having to ask for it, that, that's all I just feel, it can be done.
I guess that's simple enough.
What's the meeting?
Long as they can get it back.
Yeah, he's back, wait one second, so, since I get to have a Larry, um, get one of you to go over and even yours.
Keep abreast how this meeting goes and see if we can push any more buttons and make it happen. Get you to move, your new position, like, any, hold on, something like that?
Never know.
Was it, you got, you got elected to the.
Mont Lake of Cities and Towns Board of Trustees.
Jackie was recently elected to the Lake of Cities and Towns Board of Trustees, so she's, uh, getting up to.
You need to speak up, Larry.
I said Jackie was recently elected to the Lake of Cities and Towns Board of Trustees. So she may be able to pull some strings at that high level she's in now, so we'll see.
I just, I just like to say, I, I appreciate all you guys do, I appreciate your dedication, your hard work, you're trying to keep people safe. And, and I appreciate you bringing this stuff to us, and you're not giving up, and, and I respect that, and I think we, we wanna support you guys, we wanna help you however we can, and. Hopefully something will come from this meeting, but if, if, if it doesn't, just let us know, and we'll keep trying to figure something out to, to make something work for you guys.
We're coming into budget building season, so if you got something, it's gonna need more funds, make sure that we're aware of it, so we can.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna get at, because yeah, we will be coming up with budgets, so, so, I mean, if. You know, they don't own our business, they don't own our business. Thank you for hearing me out.
Yeah, well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you for bringing it to us.
Okay, next segment, I'm gonna do this, Weir Road, is anyone here from Weir Road? You wanna come up front, or?
What's that?
You wanna come up front, or?
No. No, I just wanted to say, I'm Amy Gilbert, my husband Greg and I live at the end of Weir Road. Um, the town has been turning the town trucks and bus around on our property for probably twenty years. Um, with no problems, we haven't had an issue with that, um, we had an incident, not an incident, but something came up where we. Learned that somebody on the town who thought it was town right away, and we wanted to ensure that, um, that it was not town right away. Long story short, we talked to the town and we decided we did not want to deed access to the town. So it's up to the town to make other arrangements, which is fine, I just wanted it to be a public record that we did not. Take that away from the town, we didn't say the town would no longer turn the buses or trucks around up here, we had no problem with that at all. That was the only thing I wanted to just make sure.
We've got a letter from the bus transportation people, um. Says, I, I can read it to you, says for any school bus route, the school transportation company. And the bus drivers are responsible for assessing and selecting appropriate safe bus stops and turnarounds. Safety is a primary consideration, if an unsafe situation arises from an unauthorized turnaround. Evaluation of turnaround considers immediate response. Montlaw clearly defines a driveway as a separate from a public highway, this means a school district has no. Automatic right to use a private road or driveway, even if many residents want it. Turning a school bus around on private property can be a safety concern due to the potential property damage. Liability issues and lack of safe turning radius. Local ordinances develop turnaround areas for school bus operations and use. The turnaround areas are safe, have sufficient turning radius to prevent accidents and property damage. In addition to developing turnarounds, the town will maintain the property seasonally, and provide assurance for seasonal conditions such as snow or mud. Where the transportation company utilizes the town turnaround, the liability for damage to the private road or driveway is lifted. Addition there's assurance that upon arrival, the turnaround has been properly maintained, which reduces safety concerns, liability. Over the past several years, private landlords have filed suits against the district and transportation providers for damages. To private properties, this can be for ruts, areas not designed for turnaround radius, sinking culvers, cracks in tires, et cetera. And majority of these suits, the landlord provides permission to utilize the turnaround area. Student Transportation of Vermont specifically works with the town of Williamstown to access. Town-maintained turnaround areas for liability and safety purposes. Allowed for cities of town-owned locations, Williamstown are maintained or managed. Student Transportation of Vermont decided to work, work even more closely with the town of Williamstown when the local residents are. Student Transportation of Vermont decided to work, working more closely with the town of Williams Town when the local residents approve a town turnaround from McGlynn Road. The transportation are chosen in addition to town limits. The transportation company utilizes this turnaround for several years until property owners contact the transportation fighter for reimbursements due to concerns of ruts. In the spring, which addition were several safety concerns with flip road, private turnarounds, which were created significant safety concerns for private turnarounds not being properly maintained. Both situations, an alternate turnaround was not available and students were brought to an intersection for transportation purposes. Student Transportation of Vermont has an obligation to transport students within a community. However, utilizing private property which holds their company liable is not an obligation to provide safe and reasonable transportation. Town of Williams Town is able and willing to design town maintained turnarounds. Will be the turnaround utilized for reliability, safety purposes. We appreciate and understand families' need for direct door-to-door transportation. However, safety is our number one priority in all matters. Thank you for your time in this manner. Sincerely, Stacy Emerson, General Manager, Student Vermont Transportation. So, um, it's been, it's not a written policy, but it's been the policy of this board. Um, that anytime that we have an issue with turnaround, that we try to get a deed to turnaround. And that protects the town down the road. You know, people change properties, transfer, not everybody's willing to let it happen. And you know, all of a bunch is stuck or some dispute arises and you're stuck with no place for the town vehicles to turn around or people to turn around on a dead-end road or school buses. So that's-
Yeah, I totally understand that. It makes sense. Um, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we weren't willing to deed it because it's, we have a Christmas tree farm and that's our parking area for our customers. And I wasn't willing to give that up for the town and then have the town have say over what happens with it. Um, but I, I feel that it seemed, it seemed silly to me that you had to go to our property owners next door and get land from them and build a new turnaround. Like you've been using this one for years and it was working fine, but I understand why you are doing that. So that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that there's been people coming to me in town saying, oh, we heard you aren't letting the town turn around up there anymore. And I, that is not the case, so I just wanted to make sure that that was someone.
Okay, well, thank you for coming in.
Thanks for giving time.
Thank you.
Any other issues with the town turnaround? Anybody have any other issues with the town turnaround policy of?
Any other issues with town turnaround policy stuff?
These, these deals have been made in the past. Handshakes are verbal, probably were good at the time, but this day and age with so many property transfers and different things going on. New people moving in town, it's imperative for the select board to protect the town interest in each other to get a chance to obtain a deed to turnaround area. As a way it's problem solved, going far away now, kicking again down the road for another select board to deal with ten years from now, so. Okay, next item is library trustees.
Yep. Um, we had three vacancies on the board and we filled all three. Uh, so I just need to do that, do what you do. Um, to get them on the board before we have to get all the signatures and all that stuff. Cause otherwise we can't meet.
I understand what you're trying to do and I have no problem with it.
Right.
The other thing that concerns me is, I don't know what's going on, but, uh.
Last page. Last, last page, last page.
Okay. Last ten years, uh, we've had to appoint eighteen different trustees to the library. Only two, the only two still standing now all those years is you and Jill.
I can just-
I said the last, last ten or last year since nineteen, since January of sixteen till now, there's been eighteen different peoples that the town has had to appoint other than you and Jill. You've, you've been the whole duration, but it's been eighteen different people over those years that have quit for one reason or another. I guess I'm wondering what the, what's driving them out. I guess I got, I got some letters from, I don't know one of them, but I do know Dusty Mills really well.
Yeah.
He's a pretty fair guy, in my opinion. And I can read it in public, what he read. It appears, to make the story short, but I haven't read another letter. Both, both agree, the two that just got done, the two guys on the board, Dusty and what was the other guy's name?
Sam.
Sam. Both of them said in their letters that the town, that seemed like you people have got something against the town. Uh, town's been screwing you out of money, da-da-da-da, it goes on. You want, I'll read it if you want.
No, I don't-
I just, I just wondering what's, what's the problem? The first, the first meeting, when I got back on the select board, the very first meeting, you people were in here with your lawyer. Using your lawyer about the town wanting to have you take over your own stuff and they wanted to keep, you wanted town to keep doing your work for you. The very, you know, that was almost two years ago, the very first meeting I came to. And I thought things got resolved. Apparently they haven't because these two letters I got is saying that you're still holding animosity towards the town. Because we took money that was some of the library's money.
You're not allowed to reuse grant funding for things that are not under the grant though. That's illegal. So, so that was a big part of the problem. And I think the two members that resigned from the Board of Trustees didn't understand that. So.
Yeah, I'm gonna read these letters.
Great.
I'm not making this up.
I didn't write them.
We had a discussion at the library with the two men in executive session, so I'm not sure where you're going with what the letters say. We know what the letters say and it would end up being our word against theirs. Um, and it was something in-house, it didn't have to do with money, it didn't have to do with anything else. And-
And it was executive board, so it never's gonna be-
So, you know, um, it was their decision, we didn't have any-
These people, these people that resigned sent the letters to the town manager, copies of them.
Just a question. Are we, is this just to appoint new positions to the Board of Trustees?
Yes, yes.
So what, my question is, what does reading the resignation letters of the other Board of Trustees have for this purpose?
I think it was their choice.
If we're just-
This was, he's not reading the resignation letter. This is a letter that Sam sent that can be read by the library trustees, the select board, you have a copy of that.
I understand that, but the library trustees are here to appoint new trustees. That's the purpose, right? Am I?
Right, there's no point in rehashing why the old members left. We just wanna gain membership so that we can move forward and do good for the town.
That's all I'm saying.
So I have a question about this money, this grant money that's being spent on stuff that's not grant money. You guys present the warrant to the treasurer to cut the checks. So I'm a little confused on what grant money is not being spent on a specific grant.
It wasn't a warrant, it was something that, that was in conversation with you and Dusty and Sam about moving money into some, from, it was a grant. Um, I can't remember what you called it in that line item, but it, it's a grant. And you guys decided to move it into a different account. And the same-
You move any money out of any library account?
No, no, it's into our own account.
I think the discussion that I had with Sam and Dusty was that some of your line items were over and some were under. And if you wanted to make it, present the budget so it looked clearer.
Right.
We didn't, I wasn't telling them to take money out of a grant line item.
I think the thing that was difficult is because it was made as a decision for two of the five board members.
Well, number one, I shouldn't be answering any accounting questions for the library whatsoever.
I know that.
Well, people have been coming to my office for years for me to explain budget reports.
Who are we supposed to talk to though?
The treasurer is only under state statute. The treasurer is only because she is an appointed treasurer.
Right.
And so she is an employee of the town.
Yes.
She is only, only has to give you the basic budget reports. So she gives you a detailed transaction report every month of what you spend. She gives you the expense and the income budgets every month. You have copies of your warrants. That's all she is required by state law to give you.
What do you think we're asking her to give us? I don't understand.
Well, I don't know, but it's taking her three to four hours a month to pull all of these reports together that you're requesting.
It shouldn't be, we're not requesting anything other than the amount that we need to write our new budget for twenty-six.
Yeah.
That's what I gave you all those percentages, and I'm not writing your budget for you.
No, we don't ask you that.
I don't know what you're spending.
No, we've never asked you to write our budget.
Again, I'm just gonna say, I think all our job here as a select board tonight is to appoint somebody.
Yeah.
Well, that is all, you're absolutely right. That's our job.
If, if we have further issues, I think we can deal with that down the road, but tonight's to appoint somebody.
I have simple questions, how come we have to appoint so many people?
Nobody wants to be on a committee anymore. They don't wanna be, it's a time commitment and it's, it's tough. And I'll honestly, I can't wait to get off. I can't wait. It's been a nightmare between the money and having people get done for whatever reason. And usually their reasons are okay. It's like, you know, my niece got done because she has two children and the age of three and Mark's a full-time job. She has not, doesn't have the time to commit to it anymore. So, I mean, there are personal reasons and there's, there's nothing that we can do about that. That's just, when you volunteer for a committee, there's no way of saying who's gonna stay and who's not gonna stay.
Do you do this for the other committees that need appointees too? Is there as much turnover in the other committees that you do this for as well?
No.
We don't actually need to appoint if you guys are elected.
But I mean, right now, in this, in this moment where you're saying that there's been eighteen people that you got to appoint over the last ten years.
The past ten years.
I mean, if the terms are five-year appointees.
You're, you're elected just like we are on the select board.
I know, but the full time-
The only thing I got to refer, the only thing I got to compare it to would be the select board. We have five members and we've had a couple people on all the years that have been prior and now. Get done for health reasons or something, but maybe two, three maybe in fifteen years.
This just seems like an exercise of humility.
He does, I just question, how come so many?
Can you speak up and tell me, um, how many years this was in?
January twenty sixteen to the present, there's been eighteen different trustees that have gotten off the board.
Do you know why?
I mean, I don't know why.
Guys, yes, I'm going with Larry.
Well, when you changed the bylaws, at one point you could only be on it for two ye-
Oh, two terms?
Yeah. Yeah, and then, then that got changed back to keep some people on, I do know that.
Yeah, I know, you had talked about me.
So.
Well, no, but at one point it was changed, you know, and then it got changed back again, so I do know that.
I wanna say we're here to ask you to approve the people that are willing to come onto our board, that's all we're asking.
Yes, good. So what I would like to do, I'm assuming these two people right here are wanting two or three that I would like to be in the line.
Yeah, and we got the letter from the other one.
Liso.
Yes, I have it here somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for being here. I understand there is issues, okay? And I was not on the board, Tyler was not on the board when this all started, okay? Stuff has happened, right? Let's just, it's happened, it's in the past. Let's please everybody, just do better and move on. Okay?
No, I'm trying.
No, no, that's, that's fine. I just, we are here to appoint some new trustees. If they're willing to be on there and they're wanting to work with this and let's do that. And just have an expectation, everybody's gonna be kind and courteous and respectful.
Yeah.
Both ways, and, and let's work together, please. That, that's-
I'm for that a hundred fifty percent.
That's all I would like to say about this. And let's just, if they want to join the, the Board of Trustees, let's appoint them and move this forwards. If things happen, we will deal with it then. That's my-
Cody, you're absolutely right, I believe a hundred percent for this ain't the first time we've been down this road.
I know.
Rowdy could attest to that, he was been down the same road before I was on the board.
I know.
So, anyway, this is a history here. The town wants to work with you.
Thank you.
I don't know what happened in the past, cause I wasn't on the board and, and I'm, I know what's going on now. And then to get letters from these people just got done, saying that you're still holding some kind of grudge against the town or think the town is trying to take money from you. And it's just ain't right. The town has no interest in taking any money from the library.
There's nobody to take.
Right, or whatever. We don't, we don't, we don't even wanna be involved with it, but we have to be. So, here we are. And I don't, you know, I know some of these people, I know Richard really well and the other, the one that sent the letters, seems like more than qualified. And I have no problem with appointing these members, I don't know, but you know, which fields that. But I just wanna hopefully going forward and to just let go of whatever problems you have back. There's only two people, you and Jill, that's been on it.
So you're saying it's our fault?
I'm just saying, these people are saying what's coming out of there. We, we have no beef with the-
We don't know what you got there.
We have no beef with the, with the library. It's just a-
Again, I'm just, I'm just asking, I'm not, I'm not the chair. I'm just asking that we just move forward and appoint the people.
We're gonna.
I make a motion, excuse me, poor language there, I almost said motion. Make a motion to appoint, please say your name.
Laura Carter.
Please say your name. And where's the letter?
Liso.
So, who are Liso?
Liso Wolf.
Liso Wolf. To the library Board of Trustees.
Thank you.
And to make a more correct answer, the Public Library Board of Trustees.
I will, I will second.
Get a second.
I will second it.
What should be a second discussion, Rodney?
So, how long are these terms?
Hundred years.
And appoint everyone from the library.
Until March.
Next election.
Until the election. The ones that left. And then they have to get all the things and all everything. They all have to get a petition to run, get out for March.
Yeah.
And they all know that, so.
And they have to be sworn in in my office before your next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So anybody gets appointed tonight, has to go see Robert and get sworn in. Any other discussion? No in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Can I just ask Jackie one question? Um, so should we call the state and get all the, the FICA and all those updates?
I gave them, I sent them to you in email.
No, 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 come on, should we? Cause you said you want nothing to do there, but then should you do that?
You're not, the only, the, the FICA and the Medicare are not, are not gonna change. This, the, the child tax is not gonna change.
Okay, good.
The only one that may change from year to year is the Beamer's. And like I said, I can't tell you what the health insurance is because I don't even know what it is yet.
Beamer's is the health insurance? I wasn't sure what that moniker was. I, I didn't know what Beamer's stood for when we were-
Beamer's is the Mont Municipal Retirement, that's Sarah.
Okay.
So that's based on her salary alone.
Right, yeah.
And I couldn't, I couldn't even tell you what her, what it would be because I don't know what her salary is based on lumped them all together when you sent me the total salary.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hopefully it's a cold outside, it was a long way to came.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, next item is a set to budget meeting schedule. You ready to do it?
November third.
November third.
November third.
November third.
Can you do six on November third?
Six o'clock.
What day is it?
Monday.
We can shoot for it. I'll make it or not, I don't know.
Six o'clock.
It's here.
He'll send us a reminder.
Maybe go to here at the county office. Here.
Yeah, we can have it. Well.
It's the same, it's the same night as the fire meetings, but that, that's the first Monday of the month, so it is the truck check night.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking because it's the Monday after. I don't know because you're talking about using this room for Halloween. So why don't we have it at the town office?
Town office, okay, that makes sense.
Shouldn't be that many people there. Okay, next item is listeners' errors and emissions. Go over that later.
Yep, so the first one is total acreage correction from twenty six point six to twenty seven for Kevin Andrews. That's an increase of value of four hundred dollars. The next one is Michael Goslin and Christina Kingston. The total acreage correction was eleven point four to eleven point oh, which is a decrease in value of four hundred. And then Vermont Land Trust, current use value changed based on acreage of fifty seven point eight nine. That's the forty nine thousand two hundred. That's a land use value. Original real value is eighty six thousand six hundred. There's no change in that value. Original total acreage in parcels was fifty seven point eight nine. Original total acreage in current use was forty three point five nine. With an original credit of twenty thousand nine hundred. Updated total in current use is fifty seven point eight nine with an updated credit of forty nine thousand two hundred dollars. So that's really not a change to the grand use. It's just a FYI for you. And then Eric Ashford, that's a veteran exemption, forty thousand exemption to be added to the grant list. That's a new veterans exemption.
So that just means forty thousand is removed from whatever the.
Yeah.
What do you? How do they, like, you know, go from twenty six, six to twenty seven and eleven, four to eleven? They just, how do they catch those?
Parcel maps that come in, surveys.
They're just double checking?
They could have had it surveyed. It could have been originally been in at twenty, twenty six point six.
Yeah.
Or twenty seven plus or minus, and then they did survey and it's twenty six point six, so.
Okay.
So we're gonna need a vote on this, right?
Yep.
So let's make the vote and then we'll have discussion.
I make a motion to accept the changes for the errors and emissions from the assessment.
You're second.
Second.
What should be your second? Any further discussion? No in favor?
Aye.
Close? We don't need any executive session with me. No more business, final table.
Good.
Good.
We have a motion to adjourn?
Take a motion to adjourn.
Second at home.
What should be your second? All table?
Aye.
Thanks everyone for coming.